This is a meeting of the City Council Health and Human Services Subcommittee. It's chaired by myself, Councilor Walsh. Committee members are Councilor Zaida Govan, who is joining us on the Zoom call, and City Councilor Justin Hirsch, who did indicate that he would be joining us, and maybe he'll jump in later. The topic for this meeting is...
I'm also joining, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you, Councilor Brown. Thanks for joining us. The topic is the response to the mental health crisis. And as a result of correspondence with Steve Nguyen, I have invited him to introduce himself, although he's probably no stranger to many of you, to our Health and Human Service Committee, because we are new members of the Health and Human Service Committee, and to share a little bit about what his organization does, and things happening in that field, and things we can do better, and things we can do together. But I'm going to ask everybody, since there's not that many of us, to just say hello and who you're representing. So I'm going to start with you, Kathy, if you could tell us.
Sure. Good afternoon. So I'm Kathy McHugh, and I'm with the Behavioral Health Network.
Thank you. Next, are you in my screen, is you, Melissa? You're...
Sorry, I'm muted. I'm Melissa Strahan. I am a resident of Springfield.
Well, thanks for joining us. Jess?
I am Jess DeFlumer. I'm with Behavioral Health Network.
Thank you. Steve?
Steve Nguyen. I'm the President and CEO of Behavioral Health Network.
Joy?
Hi, I'm Joy Eiffel. I'm with Behavioral Health Network.
Thank you. Shalan?
I'm Brown.
Nice to see you all again. Currently today with Behavioral Health Network. Great. Paul Robbins. I don't want to say how many years we've known each other, Paul.
Don't do that part. Paul Robbins, Paul Robbins Associates, Strategic Communications. We've had a long time relationship with Behavioral Health Network.
Okay. Councilor Govan, I know this is your field. You're muted. There you go. You want to say a few things? You're, I think you're muted, Zaida. Kelly, can we fix that? You are muted, Councilor.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, sorry. Something's wrong with my computer, but I was saying hi. These are my people here. Kathy, hi, Shalan. Let me see who else. And Paul, we've known Paul. So my name is Zaida Govan. I am a licensed independent clinical social worker, former employee of BHN for a long time, and ward eight city council now.
Okay. Maria?
Hi, everyone. Maria Perez, City Council War One.
Okay. Thanks for joining us. Councilor Hurst?
Justin Hurst, Springfield City Councilor at Large. Pleasure to be here.
And focus, and let me just see, I believe, Councilor Brown, you're on there somewhere, if you want to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilor Brown, I'm also in my full-time position. I work as a Chief of Staff to State Representative Bud Williams, who's Chair of Racial Inequality. So I've worked on a state level with BHN a little bit, and on a city level a little bit. And Shalan Brown is really doing a great job, no bias intended. Thank you.
And I see we have Paul Todd Hill. Paul, thanks for joining us. And we also have representatives on the call from Western Mass News. And we've been joined by Councilor Whitfield, if you'd like to say a few words. You are unmute, so you've got to unmute yourself. There you go.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. I appreciate it. I'm glad to be here today. No, I know Shalan since before she was grown. Everybody knows Shalan. Glad to be here. Thanks, Steve, for your communication, and everybody else that joined us today. I'm just glad to be here and find out what you all are up to.
Oh, yeah, and that's really the purpose of this meeting. I think we're all aware, and those of us who have family members that have mental health issues, I think we're all anxious to know what's out there for help and what we can do better. And Steve Nguyen is the President. Steve Nguyen, PhD, is the President and CEO of Behavioral Health Network. And I got to say, I was very impressed with the blurb that you sent me. I had no idea you were such a large organization. So I think we'll start with you, and then my colleagues may have some questions about how we can, the City Council and this committee might be able to help each other, and maybe make some differences for people who have mental health issues. Because I think we would all like to see, number one, the stigma be gone, and number two, help when they need it. So Steve, you'd like to get started?
Thank you, Councilor Walsh. It's a pleasure to be here. I want to express my appreciation to you and other members of your committee and the City Council for giving us an opportunity to talk a little bit about what BHN does. I have a brief PowerPoint. I'm hoping that's okay. And then we'd like to just be able to engage in some conversation, answer questions about either BHN or the Community Behavioral Health System at Large. And then, as you said, we're hoping that we can find ways to work better together. I saw recently that Councilor Govan was appointed to head up a Mental Health Committee, and however we can be helpful with that, we would love to participate. Am I able to share screen and do it with PowerPoint?
Kelly? Are you, are you able to set that up?
I think I might be able to.
Oh, good, because there we go. Okay, go ahead. Take it away, Steve. It is up, if you'd like to start your comments.
Okay, can you all see that?
Yep.
But it says, "BHN has been around for a while. We founded in 1938. A group of parents actually came together and felt like they needed some support and help with some struggles they had with their kids, and they formed a clinic. That clinic continues to exist. It's the Child Guidance Clinic on Maple Street in Springfield." One of the things that we often hear is, people don't necessarily know about BHN, but they may know, oh, I brought my kids to the Child Guidance Clinic, or I went over to that detox program on Caloo Street. So we have lots of programs that have kept their names, but we're a pretty large regional nonprofit behavioral health provider. We help people with mental health challenges, with substance use challenges, and with several number of adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We serve more than 36,000 people a year throughout Western Mass, but we're mostly in Hampden County, and we're mostly in Springfield and Corso. And we have over 2,300 staff.
How many?
Over 2,300.
Whoa, wow.
Again, our mission, I won't read all of these slides to you, but our mission is to help people, specifically with behavioral health challenges. We provide support, guidance, tools, therapy, anything that people need to make positive changes in their lives and to live more fulfilling lives. Our staff is 2,300, as you can see, just under half white and just under half people of color, and then a number of people who don't identify themselves.
Steve, I'm sorry, your slides aren't moving forward.
They're not?
No, you're still on the first slide. Now we get it. Thank you. We've, the slides have caught up to what you were saying now.
Okay. I don't know if anybody can help me, but I don't have, my screen is blank now.
Do you have two monitors plugged in?
I don't.
Oh. Would you like me to share the screen while, slides, while you do the talking?
Sure, except I don't see them.
Your resident staff is on the screen.
It's not the slides, so...
Kathy, do you want to, do you want to take it out while I'm figuring this out? Why don't you pick it up, so you can do this presentation?
Nope, I got it. You can see my slides, I hope?
I can't, but...
Well, hold on a minute, because Councilor Whitfield said she is not in the meeting, so I want to make sure that she is. So I'm going to have to go back to our host. I'm out of it now myself. We see the link. Okay, I got it. Kelly, can you admit Councilor Whitfield into the meeting? And Councilor Hurst has, yes, he has introduced himself. Okay.
So we're on the slide that explains the BHN staff. Steve, can you see that on my screen?
I'm not sure what's happening, but I can't see anything on my screen.
I can see it.
I can, I can see it.
And Tracy, are you on?
I am. Thank you.
Okay. All right, yeah, forward, yeah.
So certainly happy to explain the slides while Steve works on his technology, that the 2,300 staff, we have a breakdown of the ethnic and racial distribution of our employees. And so you can see that here on the screen. And then similar, the breakdown by race, ethnicity of our staff who live in Springfield. So about 750 of our 2,300 staff are residents of the city of Springfield. And these are Springfield residents served, so the clients. In 2021, we served a little over 17,000, 17,500 residents of Springfield in our various programs. And you can see the racial and ethnicity, ethnic distribution, excuse me, of the clients, the individuals who came to us for service, who live in the city of Springfield. What, sorry? All right. So... Then core services at BHN. We have a number of our core services focused on mental health. And across Hampden County, we have 12 outpatient clinics. And most of those clinics, and then connected even beyond those clinics, we provide telehealth virtual services. Those outpatient clinics provide assessment, clinical assessment. We offer individual, family, couple, and group psychotherapy, psychiatric medication. We assess and treat, I think we're one of the largest psychiatric teams in Western Massachusetts. We have an array of services that are on the child and family community-based continuum. So the state-supported in-home therapy program, which is basically an intensive, team-based family therapy model delivered in the home. We have a therapeutic mentoring service line for children and families. And also an extensive network of family partners that are in a program called Family Support and Training. And those family partners are embedded in the community-based programs as well as in our emergency services programs. And also an early intervention program, which serves birth to three in home-based services. And we also have an acute residential treatment facility over on Maple Hill for children and youth who are in acute crisis. Also, under our mental health continuum, we have respite centers for adults, for individuals with severe and persistent mental illness who are in the Department of Mental Health Services, and they need a respite from their congregant care setting or their family setting, and also crisis stabilization functions there as well. We can talk more about that. And those programs provide medication, assessment, and treatment, as well as intensive therapy and clinical stabilization. We have intensive outreach and supported housing for a couple specialty populations. So one is called PACT, which are Justice Involved Individuals with Severe Mental Illness who have justice involvement, as well as the ACCS program, which is individuals with severe and persistent mental illness who need support in a day-to-day basis or need to live in supported housing. We do an expansive program of integrated behavioral health and primary care, as the state has really looked to expand access for behavioral health services, identifying that they need, if you walk into a primary care practice, you should be able to get a primary care level of behavioral health support. So we have integrated clinicians embedded in Bay State's primary care locations, Mason Square, Brightwood, and the High Street Health Center, as well as in the Holyoke Health Center. And we partner with Mercy as well. We also have an intimate partner violence program that supports victims of intimate partner violence, as well as individuals who use violence in their intimate partner relationships. We have a service line of BHN services that support substance use recovery. So a significant program for medication-assisted treatment for opiate use, where we prescribe and deliver methadone, suboxone, fupanorphan, and viva-tral to support outpatient withdrawal management. So if you're struggling with opiate addiction, you don't need to go into a detox. If you have a job, you have a family, you can't afford to leave those things, but you can get withdrawal management from opiates in an outpatient capacity. We do individual and group counseling at all of those outpatient clinics that I mentioned earlier, and two regional locations for substance detoxification. One is, as Steve mentioned, the Carlson Recovery Center on Caloo Street, as well as one up in Greenfield. We have a number in our campus here at Liberty Street, where I am today, a residential recovery support program, short and long term. You can stay for two weeks, 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, in a residential program to get intensive therapy and support for your recovery, as well as living homes, where you can live in the home and then go out and work in the community. We have also recovery coaching services, which are individuals who themselves are in recovery from substance use, and their job is to support individuals in early recovery to achieve and maintain sobriety. As Steve mentioned, we have 40 or more, 40-plus residential homes for adults with developmental disabilities, intellectual and developmental disabilities. We also have a specialty outpatient clinic on Maple Street, which delivers assessment and treatment for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And that clinic also delivers a much-needed multidisciplinary assessment to determine guardianship for adults who need someone else appointed to make decisions in their stead because of intellectual or developmental disabilities. We have a multidisciplinary team of a physician, a psychologist, and a social worker who can do those. I know a lot of what was the impetus for this meeting was our emergency services and supports. So I will go through those as well. All right, so it sounds like Steve tried to get out and come back in, and he's waiting in the waiting room. Is it possible for the host to let Steve back in? While I continue down the slide deck, thank you. So emergency services and supports, we have, our hub for Springfield is here at 417 Liberty. And we have a crisis hotline that staffs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. We have, within the crisis emergency services and supports, one of the services is an evaluation of risk for individuals and a determination of the appropriate level of care. Those evaluations can be done at home or community locations. It can be done here at our 417 Liberty Street Evaluation Center, which also functions as a police drop-off center, and I'm happy to talk more about that. We also staff, we're in partnership with the Emergency Departments of Bay State, Mercy Medical and Holyoke Hospital, Holyoke Medical Center, so that if somebody walks into the Bay State Emergency Department for a psychiatric crisis, it is an employee of BHN who does that evaluation of risk and determination of level of care. We also have crisis stabilization units. They're married with the respite units I was speaking of earlier. So we have 38 beds of respite and crisis stabilization in Springfield, Holyoke, and Westfield. And again, happy to review what, what those are and what services they provide. And in many local communities, we have police co-response, which is if there's an identified behavioral health need that the police have been involved in, we participate in that. And each community has handled that differently, how the police co-response works. Happy to talk more about that as well. We have a number of justice-involved programs. So we're embedded in the juvenile and adult court clinics, delivering forensic assessments. Just double-checking, is Steve with us yet? I know he's stuck in the waiting room. Is it possible for...
I, I don't have the capacity to let him, and hopefully Kelly is able to do that.
Okay, thank you. After incarceration support services, we connect with there and provide counseling and case management and opiate use treatment bridging for people who are leaving the incarceration and have a history of substance use or addiction that needs to be treated. Let's see, our community, a list of community partners. We have extensive longstanding partnerships with other community entities. And our hope is that, as part of the work that's happening, and certainly I echo the statement, Councilor Brown, when you said that Shalan is doing a great job, I put in the chat, we think so too. We're incredibly fortunate to have a community member as well-versed and active as Shalan, who can guide our efforts to be as responsive to the community as possible. So I, we have a slide deck here of our community partnerships, and who is, who we partner with in different capacities. Again, we'd be happy to dig into any of these specifics that you all might have questions about, how we do the partnerships. Steve, if you're back and you can see my screen, do you want to talk about our vaccine equity program while I share the slides?
I am back, and I apologize. And I don't know, maybe this is a voting body, maybe there should be a vote, Kathy, as to whether they were happy with you or want something, something new and fresh. Actually, I was going to ask Jessica DeFlumer, who's started our vaccine equity program, to talk about this. She's done this in collaboration with the city and with the State Department of Public Health. Jess?
Sure. So back in January '21, if we go back a year and remember the vaccine rollout and communities' concerns that vaccine wouldn't get to populations that were marginalized, especially population of color, BHN decided to become a COVID-19 vaccine provider, even though that service is quite a bit outside of what we typically do in behavioral health. We know we have access to a lot of people in major urban areas that likely wouldn't have had access otherwise. So we contracted both with the Department of Public Health and in the Spring, city of Springfield, DHHS, in order to serve the community. And mostly, we started with a series of Springfield-based, single-site at our Liberty Street campus, vaccine clinics weekly, in order to work with folks. And at this point, it's turned into a full-scale operation, where we still have that brick-and-mortar site here on the Liberty Street campus, five days a week, giving flu and COVID shots, first dose, second dose, booster for all ages and all populations. And at this point, we also are out in the community, mostly in Springfield, some in Holyoke, and some in other parts of Western Mass, doing community-based clinics as well. And so those come usually to us by request. There's a senior center, there's a community neighborhood setting, where we can come, pop up a tent in warmer weather, and work with folks to get vaccines out to them. In the months of January, in the beginning of February, we provided vaccinations in all 35 Springfield elementary schools, and we're going to continue to do that work over the next month or so. And like I said, we're able to do that for all ages and all populations. To date, Springfield doses alone, we've administered 7103. That's duplicated, meaning there's less individuals, but that's the total number of doses given to Springfield residents. And this is the racial and ethnic breakout of the individuals that we were able to give those doses to. This is specifically COVID-19 doses. We were also able to administer flu doses to the same populations. The goal really through the vaccine equity program with the Department of Public Health is to get out to the neighborhood where we know access and potentially a lack of education or understanding about the benefits of the vaccine are really present for people. And so we go out with a combination of nurse vaccinators, as well as nurse educators, to talk with people about the benefits of the COVID vaccine.
Jess, and Kathy, do we already do the social justice slides?
I'm just going to pull those up. Do you want to do the community behavioral health? Let me just, sorry, one second, just skipping over.
And I think what we'll do when your presentation is over is open the floor to our city councilors first, and then anyone else on the Zoom call that has some specific questions. You know, I'm struck that you're not in any kind of partnership with the Sheriff's Department.
We actually are, Councilor.
Okay, I didn't see that on the slide.
We have a number of programs that we do. We have a clinical support, we have BHN staff that work in the after-incarceration support services. And then we partner with them. A couple of years ago, they opened up a methadone program in the jail, in Hampden County, and in some of the other facilities that they have in Springfield. And BHN provides a lot of the transition planning. So when people are getting those services in the jail while incarcerated, and then are about to come back into the community, we have workers in the jail and in the different facilities that the sheriff operates. And then we, we make sure they get connected to services in the community, whether it's at a BHN service or one of the other local agencies. And then we've also just started a new program that the state is funding to, again, people who are coming out of the incarcerated system with behavioral health challenges, making sure they get connected to services when they get back to the community.
Oh, good, because I know that's a big focus of Sheriff Kochi. Okay. So is there more with the presentation, or do any of this...
Just a few more slides, if we could.
Yeah, and then hopefully my fellow councilors will jump in. Okay?
So we do have a number of challenges that, as community behavioral health providers, and I think these are similar across the state. First and foremost, and this is not different from any business in Springfield, in any of your districts, we've always had a problem with staffing in behavioral health, because we are underfunded. That's that second bullet compensation. Unlike healthcare in general, behavioral health is underfunded. Right now, our staffing crunch in the Great Resignation and the Great Reshuffle, we can't find nearly enough people to fill the open positions that we have. And again, when I talk to my colleagues in other agencies, locally, regionally, and across the state, I'm hearing the same thing. We also have to conform to a number of regulations that govern what we do and how we do it. We can't always do exactly what we want to do in terms of meeting the needs of people. And similarly, insurance, I don't know what insurance all of you have, but oftentimes, we're faced with a very difficult decision of hearing from someone, needing to ask what their insurance is, before we are able to talk about what kind of services we might be able to offer them, either at BHN or at another organization in the community. Stigma, we talked about a little bit, and expectations of what we can and can't do. And then lastly, we really want to try to honor client choice, but some of those bullets above that really restrict our ability to do so. There's a, I'm sure you've heard some. Governor Baker and Secretary of Executive Office of Health and Human Services, Mary Lou Sutter, have rolled out a roadmap. And that's to really redesign what community behavioral health and primary care look like. And to do, to make a number of changes that improve access to care and the kinds of supports and services that people can get. They want to establish what are called CBHCs, they'll be regional community behavioral health centers. And in that center, people can get their crisis, their urgent care, their routine mental health, substance use services, really almost anything that they might need. And that that CBHC would be responsible for delivering services in homes, in the communities, in a clinic, we'll be partnering. I think you probably saw the slide, and Kathy talked about our relationships with the large health centers in Springfield. And we'll use quite a bit, we already are using quite a bit of telehealth. And so these are some of the other things that the governor and secretary are really hoping will change, including, you know, relevant to discussions we're having in Springfield. They really want to see new options and new responses to 911, nonviolent 911 calls.
Okay, well, this is, this is quite a menu. And I'm wondering if you have enough time during the day with all the things you need to accomplish. So this is very, very good information for us as city councilors to know all these good services are going on in our, our community, because people look to us for, for answers to a lot of issues like this.
Councilor Walsh, is there, is there maybe just a couple more minutes for Shalan to talk about our social justice work? It's a very important initiative for us.
Thanks, everyone. I'll be quick. So our social justice work at BHN, I think what is really important for folks to know is that we've gone beyond and really made an organizational commitment to not just running a just, a social justice program, or diversity, or equity program within our organization, but really embrace the social justice framework around diversity and equity and access, the full spectrum, on every service line, every program, every opportunity that we have to engage in with communities, it trickles down to all of our services. So again, it's not what we do, social justice is not what we do, it's how we do what we already do, which is behavioral health care, child and family services, and how we do that in a more socially just way, again, to embrace all the diverse communities that need us. So some of our social justice work around this, we've organized into kind of three large-scale goals. One is to really look within BHN internally, before we go out into communities and start doing social justice work and diversity and equity work, and being a good partner out in the larger world around all this talk about social justice, is we have enough staff and enough people that we serve within our laws, both in person and virtually, to really look at social justice with our own spectrum and our own lens. And how we do that is we're constantly doing things like systemic review. Are the systems, structures at BHN, hiring practices, recruitment practices? How are we advancing staff through the organization, especially Black and Brown staff, other diverse staff, LGBTQ staff? How are they getting opportunities to lead and advance in the organization? And looking at the systems of our behavioral health care services that may contribute to oppression, may be oppressive to staff, or may, may have some kind of social justice or racial justice lens that we need to look at it with. So we've spent over a year and a half just looking internally, constantly doing... So we've spent over a year and a half just looking internally, constantly doing systemic reviews. Um, and then that trickles down to the individual level as well. Um, so we work closely with our HR team and departments to do what we call reviews or assessments. And investigations around individual staff concerns. What is your experience working at BHN, especially as a black and brown clinician or staff of color? Or um, LGBTQ plus recovery coach? We want to know that you feel comfortable bringing your whole self to work and that you feel that you work at a environment that's inclusive. Um, and it ensures diversity there. So we, we, we go beyond systemic kind of social justice and look at the individual. Um, and then the second phase would be looking at how we're um, addressing the social justice. Issues and the social determinants of health of those that we serve. So we're so, serving over thirty five thousand, forty thousand. People a year, a lot from Springfield, and they don't just come to us with one thing. They don't present to us with one challenge or one. Thing that could be identified as in health inequity. They present to us with a myriad, myriad of different diverse issues. So we have to be able to provide culturally competent, relevant care, how to train our clinicians, how to do that. And for us to really do that work, we rely on what we call subject matter experts. That are both internal and external, national and local folks that are expertise and culturally competent care, black and brown clinicians. To come in and help train our workforce and how to develop this um, culturally competent services to those who need us.
Well, thank you for that. Uh, oh, you're, you're muted there, Shalan.
Sorry, some of the specific things we do again is just around recruitment, retention. We go beyond just trying to find staff for the organization using the traditional employee platforms like monster indeed dot com. We're really out there in the community, um, at the community events, making sure our staff are out there. Puerto Rican Day Parade, Harambe, different organ, different events throughout the different um, wards and uh, places in the city and saying, hey, have you thought about working for BHN? These are the jobs that we're looking for. We know that we're competing for workforce right now like everyone is. So we're, we talk a lot about our benefits. We talk a lot about our social justice work. We talk a lot about the people that we serve and we talk about a lot about how um, how people can bring their experience. And their lived experience into BHN and that really helped them to go out and help other people. And so we have a lot of things that we do under our social justice framework, but I think the most important thing to, for us that we want folks to kind of remember. Is that the, all of these things are embedded within every service line of the organization. It trickles down to all of our programs and how we do what we do. Um, and we don't just lead like diversity initiatives or celebrations. We really have made the commitment. Through our social justice teams and our clinical teams to really look at how to provide culturally relevant services and, and the communities that we serve.
No, well, thank you. Definitely. Thank you for sharing that. That's important information. So um, I'm going to ask uh, first the members of the uh, Health and Human Service Committee, Councilor Van and Councilor Hurst, if you have any comments or questions you would like to make.
Also, if you could please let me go first, because I have my hand up the whole time and I have to leave for another meeting. So if you could please just.
I don't think we have to take a vote. I think we can.
Thank you. Um, cause I'm late already, but I didn't want to leave. So thank you for the presentation. It's great information. Thank you, Paul. And thank you before did he leave? Um, oh, Paul Robbins for reaching out and asking if we needed more information. You guys were very proactive. Definitely appreciate that. Steve, congratulations on your role. Um, my question is, so. I've been looking into the contract with BHN and the Springfield Police Department. And I kind of just want to know how that works. Like, how are you guys um, called to the scene? Um, how does that whole structure work?
Kathy?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. And, and Joy Ifo is on the call too. Joy is uh, oversees our emergency services and supports program as well as our police co-response. But I'll get started and Joy, feel free to jump in. Um, so the way it works is we um, our partner, we staff the um, co-response program. Twenty four seven, three sixty five is the expectation that um, we are working towards. It's not currently funded that, at that capacity, but that's the goal. As we mentioned earlier, our emergency services and supports program, the crisis team that's mass health funded is twenty four seven, three sixty five. So we are available to do. Mobile crisis response, emergency services response. It doesn't involve the police. But we have clinicians that are at the precinct and when the call comes in for police. That is a mental health call, then the decision is made to bring the clinician out on that call as well. And that team works together to figure out. Who takes the lead, who doesn't take the lead based on the situation that is at hand. And the clinician and police officer decide in that moment, does the police officer stay? Do they leave? Do they have a seat in the car and wait during the assessment? And then the clinician is engaging in that situation to figure out what the needs are for that individual and family. I don't know if I answered your question, Counselor Whitfield.
You did. Um, one thing that I wanted to suggest, and this is for the council as well, is that. Um, when there's like victims of homicide and the families have to be notified. I think it'd be a good idea to have um, a clinician on hand as well, because I have. Quite a few friends, unfortunately, that have lost their children and to homicide and. There's just no real clinical support. And I know Shalan through Awake used to offer a clinical support program right at the emergency room or. You know, on scene when things are happening, but there's right now, there's no support for the families that's being notified that. They got a death in their family and we all know how traumatizing that can be. And then they will need support going forward. So if I could offer anything, that would be some, a service that I think should be brought up and maybe negotiated into the contract that we have with Springfield Police Department. Because just hearing some of the stories that from these families, it's like they're giving this information. They're like, sit over here and. No one's thinking about their emotional and mental health at that time. So um, I just wanted to throw that out there. I wish I had more time, but. Steve, I'm gonna set up a time to meet and tour the facilities like you suggested and um, Counselor Walsh, thank. Yeah, thank you so much for having this meeting. Did we get the PowerPoint sent to us?
I'm happy to do that.
Oh, if you could, um, that'd be great because I was in and out of concentration. So um, because I am still at work too. So um. Thank you for the presentation. Um, great information and thank you for um, liking the suggestion, Shalan, and the great work that you all are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
I would add one thing that, to the question for Counselor Whitfield is that um, the Department of Mental Health. Also has something called the um, CCRT Community Crisis Response Team. And they also support a police drop off center that partners with the Springfield Police. So it works the same way. But the Department Mental Health is also involved in directing us to be involved. When there's mental health issues that police are already involved.
Okay, thank you very much.
And we are joined uh, on, on the call by uh, Counselor Letterman. So I'm sure we'll hear from him later in the meeting. So to get back to my committee members, Counselor Govan and Counselor Hurst, do you have any comments or questions?
Hi, yes, thank you. Thank you so much for that uh, PowerPoint, Steve and Kathy. It was really good. Um, and comprehensive it looked like. Um, so. A question I get, I think, um, or a comment actually regarding uh, Counselor Whitfield's point is that, you know. Technically, the police department should have a social worker or a mental health professional there. Whenever there's a homicide, because I know crisis is not always involved when there's a homicide or any death in the city. So that's something that I think we should as a council um, talk about to the police department, because that's something that's absolutely necessary. Um, I know that when Shalan was doing it, it was definitely a very um, good asset to the community. And my question in here, and I'm looking forward, Steve, to seeing you next week sometime. Um, I think Tuesday. To, you know, look at the facility. I know that BHN does amazing work. They've been doing it for years. Um. You know, some of the questions that I haven't, not even related necessarily to the crisis unit, but to the, all the list of services that you provide. I know that, you know, all mental health agencies, anytime that we're looking for a placement or uh, assistance, there's a waitlist. So do you have any idea, anyone um, have any idea what the waitlist is like for um, say outpatient therapy, see a psychiatrist? To see, to respite? I think you guys have um, gotten a lot better at getting people into respite, because I've been able to. Access respite on recently. Um, and then the adolescent inpatient, because I know there's only a few beds there. And a lot of kids needing, you know, inpatient care or acute care.
That, I mean, uh, Counselor Govan, you're really, you're, you're at the heart of the matter, which is access to care. You know, the goal for, whether it's BHN or anyone who's doing this work, our goal is to give people the care they need when they need it. Um, unfortunately, uh, there was a summary article in the Boston Globe this past week that I will forward to all of you. That really talked about the crisis in outpatient behavioral health right now. Uh, the statistic they gave is over the last couple of years, for every thirteen people who have left the field. Left, you know, their positions as therapists in a clinic, we've only been able to rehire ten. As a result, um, there are waitlists from a few months to over a year in many places. Our waitlist. Couple that with the fact that in the pandemic, the need has never been greater. We're getting more calls from more people who have more significant needs than I, than, than in, I've been at BHN for twenty six years. I've never seen it. So we do have waitlist and we do our best to try to prioritize. Um, and that's true again, as I talk to my colleagues across the state, we're all experiencing the same thing. Yeah. I think the Globe article says that, that the length of time when we have an open psychiatry position to be able to hire a psychiatrist is something like nine to ten months. Uh, BHN, we've been pretty lucky. Uh, one of the shortest waits that you have if you come to services at BHN is for psychiatry. Really fortunate. Got a great group of psychiatrists and psychiatric, psychiatric nurses who have stayed with us. But that is, that is the challenge. And the, the unfortunate thing is. At a time when the governor and the secretary and, and the legislature in Massachusetts are willing and able to put some more money. Into community behavioral health, the roadmap, um, we're going to be challenged because we can't find the people, the workers. To provide the services that the people in the communities need. It's a crisis. There's no way around that.
Yeah.
Would love to. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead, Kathy.
I was just gonna add one thing to that, which is that we've been playing a lot with. Alternative models of behavioral health support. There's an article out of the Yale Child Study Center a couple of years ago about. If all of you think about the option for somebody that needs help isn't master's level individual therapy appointment every week kind of thing. You're going to have a massive waitlist because as Steve's saying, the access to those providers is so minimal. So we wrote and got a, a grant from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Authority, federal funding, stamps of funding to support a two-year pilot of a multidisciplinary team. That really supports more peer and um, navigation. So we're looking at the social determinants as well as the peer supports. And relying on the master's level clinician less with the expectation that that would make services more widely available with less wait time. So we've been piloting alternative models to see what we could figure out. How to improve it.
That's great. I'm, I'm really, and I was really excited to see the um, PowerPoint, um. Steve regarding the community behavioral health of clinics or centers that the country is, is needing. And I think that's something that's absolutely necessary. I'm really excited um, to be. Uh, Chairwoman of the Met, um, Mental Health Committee, which I want. All of your BHN committee partners to be a part of, to be invited, because we need everybody. Like you said, this is a crisis. The pandemic didn't help it at all. And um, and I'm just really looking forward to finding a solution. You know, to the problem that we have. So thank you so much. And thank you, Counselor Walsh.
Thank you.
However, we can be helpful in that, that committee, we would absolutely be willing to help.
Appreciate that.
Counselor Hurst?
Uh, I think.
I'll defer to Counselor Perez, who I know has her hand up.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said I'll defer to Counselor Perez. I know she has her hand up.
Okay, Counselor Perez?
Yes, I'm gonna have to leave because I want to jump in. I have to jump in another meeting. But um, there's no surprise. I was paused, I was confused and it was through the media and I was looking for some clarification. How does the crisis service, when it comes, there's no surprise of what happened to Mr. Taylor, what we went through. And what I heard from the police department that they were working in connection with BHN when it comes to crisis. I want to understand more the mechanism from that point of view. And I think I probably charge it to side I go by now, that's the fundamental hope. But I think it's more of a, of giving some comments. We need to really look at that model. Because I'm still confused, the community is confused at what happened. Uh, and I'm being charged from my own community because I see the, the, the. The limitation when it comes from the mental health and then experience it myself with my family. I think that's a conversation that we need to, to start having. I have to apologize because I have to jump into another meeting, but I think I wanted to bring that across. So we could start uh, having a dialogue of that conversation. I just don't want this to just go. I think that we need to have more accountability for what happened. Um, at this point, and this is dearest to me because I have family member that I had gone through this. Um, so it's just um, some type of work coming this and for conversation. And I know next week. I personally, being in my ward, I'm gonna meet with part of the members of the BHN administrator. But I wanted to just bring some conscience to the, to, to the counselors as well. Thank you so much. And I know I will be addressing that on a later time with the committee. Thank you. And I apologize that I gotta jump in another meeting. You guys, thank you.
And this obviously is just uh, you know, for the Health and Human Service Committee, this, this is just our first meeting. So uh, Counselor Hurst? We're back to you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I just have a couple, couple of questions. I saw thirty eight beds for a variety of different communities.
Which didn't seem like a heck of a lot, did it?
That doesn't seem like a lot. Uh, can you, can you just briefly uh, talk about what the plan might be to access more? Is there a demand for more? You know, and then talking uh, with one of my family members who went through. One of their sons having significant mental health issues, one of the concerns that they said were beds and a lack thereof. So can you, can you just tell me a little bit more about that?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Hurst. So tho- the beds that BHN operates are not hospital beds. Those are called respite or some of them are actually paid for uh, um, through a different mechanism for people who don't quite need to be in the hospital. But they need to be away from their home or their family or their community for a few days to get some extra support and care. The hospital beds, inpatient level of psychiatric care, that's something that BHN doesn't do. Uh, on the addiction side, we do the inpatient, that's called detox, right? Over on Karoo Street, the Carlson Recovery Center. But those, so those beds are, are really limited for people who uh, may, they may be in the emergency room. They, they may be uh, very depressed, anxious, uh, needing a medication change, but they don't really need to be in a hospital. So we can use our fifteen beds in Springfield or some beds in Holyoke or Westfield for that. The inpatient, the scenario for inpatient beds, uh, which I think is maybe what you were talking about. You know, it's been a crisis in the Commonwealth and uh, the legislature and the governor had put extra funding before it. You, you may know that uh, Providence Behavioral Health Hospital was sold to an organization called Mira Vista. And they've opened some of those beds and that Bay State, we work very, very closely with Bay State. Um, and they have plans to build a large uh, inpatient unit uh, facility in, in Holyoke. And that will have beds for adults, for the geriatric population. Counselor Govan mentioned the limited number of adolescent beds. They are planning to bring more uh, adolescent and pediatric beds. Uh, and if it would be helpful to bring Barry Sarvet is the, the chief of psychiatry at Bay State. We work very closely with him. If you'd like more information, I'm sure we could, we could get him to join us. Uh, but the plan is, uh, we have, we feel we have adequate of those respite beds, those thirty eight beds. It's very seldom that they're all full. But it's those psychiatric beds that really BHN doesn't do, but we've been working with our partners to make sure they know what the need is. And as you said, Counselor, that the need is out there. We've, we've between uh, beds being closed uh, at Providence for years and other hospitals closing down. We've needed more beds and they are on their way, but they're not quite here yet.
Good to know. Uh, and I have a few more questions. I reserve most of them from when Tada uh, holds uh, some meetings through her subcommittee. But the, the last question that I'll ask, uh, before turning it back over to the chair is that as I'm looking at the contract with Springfield Police Department. I see, uh, it seems like it's fifteen thousand dollars uh, to do uh, whatever work it is that you're doing in conjunction with the police department. For me, that just seems fairly minimal. And when I start looking at the times in which. You all are available to provide those services, it only seems like it's a couple of days a week. During a select number of hours and then it also, you know, maybe by appointment. Uh, so it seems pretty sporadic. And so my question is. Uh, are we looking into, I know you talked about new models, uh, but have we approached the question either with the city of Springfield? Or even through maybe some proper funding, uh, or, or at the state level, how we can do more? Because that to me, fifteen thousand dollars worth of services doesn't seem like a lot of what we might want to offer the residents of Springfield.
Uh, uh, again, right on target. Um, it's been, no, in fairness, the, the co-response models with the police nationally and certainly in Massachusetts. They're relatively new. We've only been doing it for a few years. We've only been starting to build it and expand it. Um, we did meet with the, the administration. We did meet with the administration recently, both with the mayor and Police Commissioner Clapproot and Helen Colton Harris as well. And we have had some conversation about expanding that particular program. That said, that's one tool to have in a toolbox. Calling our crisis team is another tool. Having other forms of community response, a number of the communities in Massachusetts are starting to experiment with other models. As I mentioned, the governor and Secretary Sudders really want to see that as part of the new roadmap, that there are alternative unarmed responses models. So we're happy, as BHN, I, I can tell you, we're, we're committed, we're happy to be at any table where people in the community want to talk about what are the community needs and how would those needs best be met? And then, of course, hopefully there's funding to support that. But I think there's a lot of conversation to be had, and we would like to be included and be part of it.
Good to know. And I love that you've included Adma as one of your partners, as well as Latino services, I believe, Latino counseling.
Yeah.
Great to know. Thank you so much. Keep up the work that you're doing in the community. And thank you, Madam Chair.
I see that Counselor Brown has his hand up. Counselor Brown? You're muted right now.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Just based on, on the work that me and my sister has done throughout the years, I've found, as far as with the BHN situation, to me, it sounds like it, it, it needs more therapists and, and people can actually work in that field. I know in the past, they used to have on Springfield College, they would have incentives for people who actually went and became teachers. They'd be able to get free schooling. I, I would wonder, do you guys plan on maybe collaborating with some of the local colleges? Or maybe I can help, we can help maybe offer some of the black and brown people in the community free, maybe partial schooling, even some people who are black and brown in your organization, offering free schooling in order for them to be able to obtain some of those, you know, so we can get more therapists and individuals who look like us, and we can incentivize people, you know, might not be able to afford the actual schooling. Do you guys have something like that in play?
What we, we are working on that, in that area, we're working on a number of different initiatives. So we absolutely are partnering with Springfield College and some of the other local colleges, but specifically Springfield College and, and Stick as well, where we have interns from their programs come and work at BHN. That's been our, one of our most, and I think for all of the agencies, that's one of our most successful recruiting strategies, is to have interns that we train and who get to know the agency, and hopefully they have a very good and positive experience and want to stay. The other thing we've done is, you know, while, while I was experiencing technological problems, I'm sure Kathy showed a slide about how diverse our workforce is. But, but, you know, in terms of some full disclosure, most of our diversity is at lower level in the organization. Like a lot of human service organizations, as you rise up and look at senior management, we become a whiter organization. We've had very little success trying to recruit when we have openings. And we have a very different strategy, which is let's try to start promoting people and developing people from within. And part of that, Counselor Brown, is that we have started a fund that we're, I spend a lot of time in meetings with Mass Mutual and the banks, trying to get them to give us some money for this fund that is specifically to improve professional development opportunities for our staff and for staff of color in, in particular. So we are able to offer tuition loans that people can, instead of having to pay back the loan, they can just work at BHN. And over time, the loan is forgiven. We will pay, pay for people to take courses, anything that will improve a person's professional development. We now have a fund that we're looking to build. If people are interested, I can certainly get you some information. But we are, we're committed to that, and it's been successful. We have, I think our, Shalan is, is very, has been very helpful in working with some of our staff to go out into the community. So, you know, if you come to BHN, you may come in in one job, but we're going to help you to move up in the organization and, and develop your own skills. So, and any help that, that you can be, Counselor Brown, would be much appreciated.
Yes, I'm, I'm definitely glad to hear that. And I definitely appreciate all the great work you guys do. Anything I can do, even on the, on the state level to lobby up there for you guys, just give me a call, feel free. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Letterman, I see you on the call. Did you want to make any comments or have questions?
No, no, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. I apologize. I wasn't able to join at the very beginning. But, you know, did appreciate the opportunity to meet recently with officials from BHN and appreciate your efforts and the efforts of our colleagues in bringing this conversation forward. I'm looking very forward to supporting Counselor Govan and her committee's work. You know, some of the, some of the topics that have been involved in conversations that I've had in the past, and I know others have as well, is related to also the Hub and Core Program and what that can do to bring individuals who may be coming into contact with the police department, but, you know, are not engaged in criminal activity, bringing them into contact with the organizations, including BHN and others, that can actually provide the support that they need. And I think BHN's been a strong partner via Hub and Core. But I think this conversation around their co-response is important and, and how that can be strengthened. So looking forward to seeing how that develops. The other thing that I would say is relative to the Carlson Center and what was mentioned around BHN's role with detox is also critical. And one of the concerns that we've raised with the state is making sure that there are enough beds available in Western Massachusetts to really accommodate the need that exists with regard to addiction. And we know how closely those two issues, we know how closely those two issues are linked. So very glad to see all of these issues coming forward to the forefront. And we, as we move out of the pandemic, hopefully we can see more funds and more efforts brought in that regard.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. And thanks for all your work with COVID. We are also joined by City Councilor Tim Allen. Tim, did you have any questions or comments on this presentation from Behavior Health Network?
Unfortunately, no. Thanks to all of you for the presentation and the meeting. I had a conflict with another finance meeting at the same time, and that just finished. So I just caught the end. So I just wanted to say thanks to everybody and pick up what I could from hearing the last few minutes.
Well, I believe that Steve and Kathy, you both said you will be sharing or sending your screen presentation. I mean, there was, there's an awful lot here to digest in just, in just one meeting. So we'll be having future meetings on. And to me, it seems we're all agreeable to work together. So I think that's very positive. So, so on my end, I mean, like, light went off when you mentioned ERs. I have spent a lot of time in the ER lately, because my husband has been there nine times in the past year, past year, and just there again on Monday. So when someone comes into the ER and they need your services, how long do they have to wait? Because there's a lot of waiting, talking about being understaffed. There's a lot of waiting in ERs.
So unless a person is medically compromised, they have hurt themselves, they've taken some kind of overdose or something, the ER is the absolute worst place to go if you need a behavioral health service. Because before you, long before you'll get to see somebody from BHN, you have to wait and see a medical professional and, and go through what's called medical clearance. And only when they're ready to say, you know, this person is, doesn't have any medical issues, now they call BHN. And then one of Joyce's team will come and do, do an evaluation in the same kind of work that we do. What are your needs and what kind of program might there be to help you with your needs? But it can be hours, hours and hours and hours before you even get through that medical clearance part, depending on when you go to the ED and what the business looks like there, and before you get to see a behavioral health clinician. Again, that's true throughout the state, not just here in Springfield.
Yeah. So, so clearly, they've got to go a different way. And my question is about teenagers. I know you said you had respite and all things like that, but I mean, certainly you don't, you can't put all ages together, right?
No, we, we have a facility up on Maple Street, three eighty-five Maple Street in Springfield that is a short-term residential program for adolescents, kids from ten to eighteen. And we're looking to expand that so that we can take, unfortunately, there's a need for younger kids to, at times, be out of their home and to be able to do intensive work with their families before they can be safe and thrive again at home. So we do have a small program, twelve, our capacity is for twelve adolescents, but we're looking to expand that sometime soon.
Yeah, I think there's unfortunately a real need in that, in that age category. So I wanted to ask my friend Paul Robbins, would you like to add anything to this? Because I know you've been involved with the NH for a while.
Yeah, I have. And I think I can share this. I've had a family member who is bipolar. And so I've worked with and for BHN for a long time. But I've had a couple of instances where that family member interacted with the police department. And that is a very traumatic engagement with no easy answer. But I can tell you, I was really comforted that almost right after the police arrived, a BHN person was there. And essentially, what I saw, now, it's not perfect. And I, I hear everybody's comments and Counselor Hurst and, you know, there's some of these problems of really vexing, and they're costly and all that stuff. But they intervened at a point where the outcome was great both times. Because when you suffer one of these episodes, you really had a loss. And if you've never confronted it before, it just happens. You don't even know that you're supposed to call the police, but at some point, you feel you have to call the police, because where do I go? And so the fact that they are so connected to BHN, I mean, for me personally, was very comforting to see that. But to see them in action and then get the, the person in my family in the right place. This is really, I guess I would say is really, really hard work. And until you experience it yourself, is fraught with so many pieces that you're just not prepared for. But there's a comfort knowing there's an organization with the depth that it has. And I'm not just saying that because, you know, we work for them, to get the person and this family member in the right place. And there's a happy ending to it. But I can't imagine without that kind of support. Can there be more? For sure. Can there be better training? Can there be more resources? Absolutely. But I've seen it from the inside and the outside. So it's, it's, it's comforting to know that people that really care about this work, very dedicated to it. And one of the things I've learned about BHN, and then I'll stop, is that people have worked there, worked there for many, many years. And many of the people that work there were clients of, of BHN. So there's a, I believe there's a commitment to community. And Steve always says, you know, we're not perfect, but we're, we're aiming to be perfect. So having that personal experience was really enlightening for me.
No, thank you. Yeah, I, I would say that they're, they are lucky to have you, based on your, your expertise and experience, but you're standing in the community. So, okay, someone was just reaching out to me.
Yeah, I was just trying, gonna jump off, off the pod, and that, that, that was Paul's experience with our co-response team. But one of the things we're really hoping with, especially the city council and getting the word out with, with these calls, is that you don't have to call 911. We run a whole community crisis response program and team where the majority of our calls are not with a police officer. So we would love to partner with the city on an education campaign on call our crisis number. You don't have to call 911 and engage them in these situations. If you're having a problem with your son, your loved one, someone you're seeing that doesn't need the police officer there, there's an alternative. We just got to get people to use it more. We, so we have the co-response team when we, when we need it, with the city of Springfield, with the police officers. We, but the majority of our calls, we don't always have clinicians, I mean, police officers accompany clinicians with us. We're out there doing the community-based crisis response. The folks would just know that number, learn that number, and call that number more.
Well, that's important information, because people may not know there's an alternative, particularly if it's the first time a family member has an episode. And, and with, like Paul, I have had personal experience with this, and I wouldn't know that there was another alternative. So I wanted to give a- Counselor Walsh, in my mind? Okay. And then I want to give an opportunity to anybody who's on the Zoom call with us, who has a question, who hasn't spoken or would like to share some information. Okay, Zaida?
Thank you. I'm sorry. I apologize. Thank you, Counselor Walsh. So I just wanted to, I guess, get back on what was said earlier about the resources, right? And, you know, only master's level clinicians are allowed to do those crisis assessments that Shalan is talking about. And, you know, the crisis phone number, I give out to everybody who asks about a crisis, because that's exactly what they need to do. So since we have Counselor Brown on here, who is the Chief of Staff for Rep Bud Williams, we could ask him to put more resources into our, you know, workers. Master's level clinicians, you know, have to have a master's degree, of course. And when you graduate from Springfield College, where a lot of the interns come, you know, once they get that training at the crisis center, they leave, because the pay is not commensurate with what they need, so that they can pay those student loans back, you know. So Counselor Brown, you need to talk to Rep Williams and have him increase the budget for this type of service, and not just, of course, VHN, but for all across mental health services in the state. So that's something that I'm hoping, you know, with our committee, we could, that could be one of the outcomes, of course.
We'll do that in the form of a resolve, Zaida.
We could do that. Yeah, absolutely. So I'm gonna, I'm hoping that everybody's help with that. Thank you. Thank you so much, Counselor Walsh. And everyone, thank you so much for the work you do.
And I am also going to be on Zaida's committee, so I'm looking forward to that. Is there anybody on the Zoom call that hasn't made a comment that would like to? Melissa, did you have a concern or did you want to share anything?
Um, no, I would just wanted to take in all the information. Thank you.
It's a lot of information to take in. Thank you for joining us, Zaida. I think everybody else on this call has had a comment, and we usually do try to keep our subcommittee meetings to an hour, and we've kind of gone over that. So I think this has been instructional, helpful. I think it's giving us a couple of different directions to go into where we can be supportive of each other. And, you know, it isn't just mental health agencies, but, but I know they've had a tremendous loss of personnel, for example, at Bay State. So I, I, I can share your, your staffing concerns. So we will meet again. And I think as a committee, we will either work with your new committee, Zaida, or come up with a specific goal that the city council, Health and Services, and BHN can work on together. So thank you all for your time and for sharing all this important information.
Thank you, Karen, and everybody. Thank you.
And I see so many old friends on the call.
Have a good day.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good weekend.